Hafadee, welcome to the Guam Congress Building, everyone, and good afternoon. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Thursday, September 28, 2023. The time is about 1:02 PM. And in compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Thursday, September 21 and Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asks that those present please be quiet if you can and refrain from moving around within the public hearing room. And we've also asked protocol to keep the doors as quiet as possible. Individuals presenting testimony are invited to submit written testimony afterwards in order to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation by a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senators, any other person testifying. Personal inference about the character or motive of any senator is not permitted or of any individual testifying is not permitted. This hearing is to collect testimony, not to debate or to engage in back-and-forth arguments with the participants. Berating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed, and if you ask a question, please allow them to answer. So we have one agenda item this afternoon. This is the appointment of Edgar T. Aguilar to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees from March 22, 2019 to March 21, 2025, to fill an unexpired term of Byron Everestu. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with the vice-chair of my committee, Committee on Health, is Senator Joanne Brown. Senator Tello Taitegui has also joined us, and Senator Tom Fisher, and Senator Roy Canata. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. All right, so this is an appointment as a trustee of the Board of Trustees for GMH, and our statutes require that the Board of Trustees shall have the governance and control of the GMH. They shall be composed of ten members, four members representing the general public, who shall possess a background and experience in healthcare management, finance, or any other business-related field, and one member representing the allied health professions; two members representing the Guam Nursing Association; and two members representing the Guam Medical Community, appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the legislature; one member, who shall be the president or designee of the GMH Hospital Volunteers Association, who shall be ex officio. Each trustee is entitled to receive a stipend for their attendance at meetings, and there's a cap on that. The duties of the trustees are they shall be liable for the negligent act of any hospital employee or officer if the board knew or had noticed that said employee or officer was inefficient and incompetent to perform the services for which he was hired, or said board retained such inefficient or incompetent person after knowledge or notice of such inefficiency or incompetency. No trustee shall be liable for decision made in the good faith, non-malicious fulfillment of his duties. The board shall be liable as fiduciaries in the execution of their duties. No trustee shall be actively engaged in the selling of services or goods to the hospital without the express approval of the Board of Trustees. This restriction shall not apply to healthcare professionals who provide direct patient care services to the hospital. No trustee shall act when a conflict of interest occurs. Trustees shall disclose the nature of the conflict of interest to the members and abstain from any discussion or voting on the issue until it's disposed of. Failure to disclose a conflict shall be subject to removal from the board. Meetings are held regularly. Special meetings may also be called, and they're all subject to the open government The term is for six years. These are staggered terms, and this is filling an unexpired term, so it will be for a little less than six years. The board members must be U.S. citizens or permanent resident aliens domiciled in Guam for three years prior to the appointment. Cannot be an employee of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. All right, we'll now receive testimony again on the appointment of Edgar T. Aguilar. So I have signed up. Yolanda Pedronas, you may begin.
Hafadee, my name is Yolanda Pedronas. I am the Director of Human Resources for Triple J Enterprises. I am here to read the testimonies of both Mr. Christopher Duñez, our CFO, and Mr. Jeff Jones, our president and COO. Hafadee Speaker Terahy and members of the 37th Guam Legislature Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. My name is Chris Duñez, and I am writing to express my support for the appointment of Mr. Edgar Aguilar to the Board of Trustees of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. As the CFO at Triple J, I have had the distinct pleasure of collaborating closely with Edgar in his capacity as our Director of Tax and Compliance over the past eight years. Edgar's knowledge of local tax issues and regulatory compliance has been pivotal to our company's stability and growth. Additionally, Edgar possesses an extensive understanding of tax regimens throughout the Micronesia region. His experience with Deloitte took him to the Sina Mi, Federated States of Micronesia, and the Republic of the Marshall Islands, equipping him with a diverse regional perspective. It's paramount for the hospital to fully grasp financial dynamics, and Edgar's regional and local expertise positions him exceptionally well for this challenge. Edgar's approach to work is rooted in collaboration and inclusivity. He listens, evaluates, and acts with careful consideration. In a government-run hospital board environment, these qualities are essential to harmoniously bring together diverse perspectives for the collective goal of better healthcare outcomes for our island's constituents. In conclusion, I endorse the appointment of Mr. Edgar Aguilar to the Board of GMHA. His involvement will significantly benefit the hospital, its patients, and our broader community. Thank you for considering my testimony, Chris Duñez. This is the testimony of Jeff Jones. Dear Madam Speaker, I am writing to express my wholehearted support for the appointment of Mr. Edgar Aguilar. As a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, it is with great pleasure and confidence that I provide this testimony on his behalf. I've had the distinct privilege of knowing Mr. Edgar Aguilar for several years, both personally and professionally, and I can attest to his commitment to the betterment of our community and, in particular, his desire to advance healthcare services in Guam. Mr. Aguilar's professional background and dedication makes him exceptionally qualified for this important role. His extensive experience in tax, finance, and accounting has equipped him with the knowledge and skills needed to address the complex challenges that the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority faces on a daily basis. He has consistently shown his ability to collaborate effectively with stakeholders, fostering partnerships that drive positive change. His inclusive and transparent approach to decision-making ensures that the interests of all members of our community are considered and respected. In addition to his professional accomplishments, Mr. Aguilar's personal qualities further endorses his suitability for this role. He is a person of high integrity, who always places the interests of others above all else. His dedication to his tireless work ethic are exemplary and inspire those around him to strive for excellence. I firmly believe that appointing Mr. Edgar T. Aguilar as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees would be an astute and beneficial decision for our community. His wealth of knowledge and desire for healthcare improvement and his dedication to serve makes him an outstanding candidate for this position. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly support Mr. Aguilar's appointment to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees and have the utmost confidence in his ability to contribute positively to the healthcare landscape in Guam. I kindly urge this committee to recognize the tremendous value he would bring to this esteemed board. Thank you for considering my testimony, and I trust that you will make the best choice for the future of healthcare in our community by confirming the appointment of Mr. Edgar Aguilar. Sincerely, Jeff Jones.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedronas. Again, Ms. Pedronas was reading testimony on behalf of Chris Duñez and Jeff Jones. Thank you. We also have Marlin Aguilar.
Good afternoon, Speaker Terahy, Vice Chair Brown, Senator Taitegui, Senator Fisher, and Senator Canata. I'm here to offer testimony for my brother Edgar Aguilar. He is my older brother and also the recipient of one of my kidneys, and I feel that, you know, we've always been close, but I feel like now we have this real connection. And, you know, we had to do this surgery off-island, and I think that my brother, even though his specialty is finance, I think he is committed to improving the healthcare system on Guam, and it starts with GMH. And I feel like he would make a wonderful addition. His expertise and even just his knowledge would be beneficial to both GMH and also the island of Guam. And unfortunately, you know, we had a brother that passed away, and we also had our father, who died 35 years ago to the day. And both of them had to seek care off-island. So it's my hope that my brother's role, being on the GMH board, will be to, you know, improve healthcare and also allow people to stay on island, then have to go off-island and miss their families. So that's all. I'd love to just, please, vote for my brother, but please support my brother. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar, and thank you as well for your work at Department of Public Health and helping our healthcare system that way. All right, our CEO of the Guam Memorial Hospital, Lilian Peres-Pisadas.
Thank you, Speaker and Chairwoman of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Preservation, Senators Senator Fisher and Vice Speaker, I mean Vice Chair Joanne Brown and Senator Tello and Senator Roy, thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, the management, the staff and medical staff, of course, the patients that we serve, we are very excited, and we really welcome Mr. Edgar Aguilar. When I spoke with him a couple of months ago about his nomination to the Board of Trustees, he was so excited. He was very happy and, you know, really committed to coming to GMH as a trustee member to help the hospital. And so we are just very, we're, sorry, okay, we're really looking forward to having him join our GMH team at the governance level. So with this knowledge and his expertise as a financial guru, we certainly welcome that, and we really do need that expertise. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify verbally? If not, we will ask Mr. Aguilar to testify.
Thank you. Buenos, and hafadee, Madam Chairperson, and Senatorial Members of the 37 Guam Legislature's Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Thank you for your time today. I would like to thank the members of the Guam Memorial Hospital Administration, who are here in support of my nomination. I would also like to thank my wife, Marie Aguilar, who is a registered nurse at the Guam Memorial Hospital, my sister, Marlin, who is current Chief Public Health Officer at the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and my friend and colleague, Ms. Yolanda Pedronas, who is the current Director for Human Resource at Triple J Enterprises, for being here to provide their support and to have offered their testimony on my behalf. My name is Edgar Aguilar. I was born and raised on Guam. I attended high school at Simon Sanchez and later earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in accounting at the University of Guam. I was granted my license to practice as a certified public accountant in December 2000. I'm a father of two who are currently attending high school. I currently serve as a Director of Tax Compliance at Triple J Enterprises for the past six years after serving as the company's corporate controller for two years. Our company has numerous business operations located in Guam, the Sina Mi, Republic of Palau, Republic of the Marshall Islands, and California. Prior to coming to Triple J, I had worked at Deloitte and Touche LLP, both in their Guam and Sina Mi offices for the past 23 years, as an auditor and tax accountant before leaving the firm as a tax manager. Beyond my employment background, I'm a current member of Bayview Baptist Church and involved in their small group ministry. I am humbled to be nominated to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees at Guam Memorial Hospital. My decision to accept this nomination did not come easy and was due to a personal journey that I would like to briefly share. As my sister had mentioned, in early 2020, I was diagnosed with end-stage renal disease. This condition has afflicted several members of my family, including my brother, who in 2018 passed away at the age of 50 from complications arising from this disease. I knew that I had to come to terms with this after I was diagnosed and took full responsibility for not taking care of my health growing up. For over two and a half years, I underwent dialysis treatment three times a week. During each of the three and a half hour sessions I endured, it allowed me a lot of time to reflect. Do I let this affliction take control of me for the rest of my life, or do I instead trudge along, continue to provide for my family, and cherish every minute with them as long as I'm able to? Fortunately, through the kindness of my loving sister, Marlin, her donation, I was able to undergo a successful kidney transplant over a year ago in the Philippines. This renewed lease on my life has given me a clearer perspective for the future. Our health insurance provider even asked my sister me to become advocate for kidney transplant so that many others in Guam would consider this alternative lifesaving procedure. I wholeheartedly believe that being at this hearing today has always been one of God's plans for me on this earth, to use my gift and acquire, my gift and acquired knowledge to serve our community in this capacity. I understand from the news that there are several issues affecting the Guam Memorial Hospital that cannot be quickly resolved. If confirmed, I hope to lend my professional experience in accounting, finance, and compliance to serve on this Board of Trustees effectively as it tackles these issues, which in turn helps the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority achieve its strategic goal, quote, "to improve the health, well-being of the people of Guam by providing advanced outpatient, inpatient, and post-acute healthcare services." Situs mase.
Situs mase, Mr. Aguilar, for accepting this nomination and being willing to serve, and also for your testimony today, and for sharing that very personal experience, which I believe is very relevant to your potential service as a Board of Trustee member. For the record, we also received written testimony from Jenny Chu, CPA, formerly of Deloitte and Touche. I read earlier the criteria to be on the Board of Trustees that's in the statutes, the laws. Do you have any issues with that or any conflict that you see?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, Senator, my wife is a current employee of GMH. She's a registered nurse there, so 14 years, and I know that there will be some times when the board will have to act on personnel issues that would affect my wife, and I would, you know, happily recuse myself from any of those proceedings and even from voting when needed, so.
Do you have any business interests outside of Triple J, or does Triple J do business with the hospital?
Not that I know of, except that, you know, the, one of the Triple J family members, Jeff Jones's sister Julie Morell, is part of the Guam Memorial Hospital Volunteer Association. That was their legacy of their mom, Margaret Jones, so.
Yes, of course, yes.
That's, I think that's the only connection that we have to the hospital.
Yeah, and as you stated in your testimony, GMH is facing some pretty serious issues. I invite you to stay after this if you are able. At 2 o'clock, we're going to be having an oversight hearing on GMH to follow up on some of those critical issues. And I think, for me, I think the Board of Trustees always do their best, but what I am guessing, it's a guess based on other testimonies of other nominees that have come since my terms in here, that they know what they're told. But sometimes I, I think I'm going to urge nominees from here on that they have to learn much more than they are just, than what is reported during the meetings. And that's because the public is learning much more than maybe what is discussed at the meetings, and the public wants to hear answers to those things. It's the public, when they walk into an ER or they walk into the hospital and they see with their own eyes certain conditions, we need the Board of Trustees to be experiencing the same issues or to be familiar with those issues so that they can address that. So that if, for example, management just doesn't report on that during that meeting because, you know, in their minds, they've got a million things that are going on, I still think the Board of Trustees has to, has to do a little more to bring it up and to, it's, it's less a technical approach as a common sense approach. Kind of like, yes, we're talking about all our big plans, but in the meantime, we've got mold on the walls. What's going on, right? Or, or what are we going to do about it? And other, and if you walk the hospitals and people start complaining, what are you going to do about that, right? And so your wife's a nurse, thank you, by the way, for your service, very critical field, critical shortage of nurses, you're going to hear from the nurses all the time, right? What their issues are. We're hearing in our offices all kinds of things, short on supplies, right? The HVAC system, that's a whole thing we're going to talk about later at the oversight hearing, but I guess I'm just looking to you, do you, I find some people, when they come into these government boards, they're not, they're not used to these government boards. And so they're very nice, and they're very compliant, and they go along with whatever is reported to them, but I guess I really think we need to change that a little bit. And when we serve on a government board, you're going to have to be willing to ask questions that might not be popular, ask questions that no one else is asking. And I guess I would just say, use your newness there, you know, to just say, I want to know everything and ask everything, because, I don't know, I just feel like when it comes to GMH particularly, we've got to do things differently. Many, many years, you know, we've, we've talked about many similar issues, and so I guess I would ask that you, you know, represent or try to get answers that you can go out to the public and feel very confident about, you know? Because that's the issue that I am having as a public servant, chairperson of oversight over the hospital. We've had so many oversight hearings to talk about these questions. GMH comes up with many, many plans and has worked very hard, but we still have some very serious issues. So I just think it's going to take all of us to be as bold and questioning as possible and not, not to your detriment, but hopefully for improvement, right? And that, for me, that's the only way we're going to get improvement. You're going to have to be willing to talk about things. So I'll tell you what we've talked about in other hearings. We talked about hiring above step, like public information officers. That was one of the controversies we talked about in our, our last confirmation hearing or one of the earlier confirmation hearings for another board member. We talked about, of course, finances, right? And hopefully, your expertise is going to make you completely confident to question them about their finances, their long-term goals, how are they going to resolve this? We have, I don't know, they talk about vendors are not being paid, right? So that's a combination of finances and maybe other decisions that have been made, so management, right? So I guess I just want to ask you, how comfortable are you in questioning those people at GMH?
Thank you, Speaker. I don't intend to be a fly on the wall. That's my, because as an accountant, I've always been, I like to take things in detail. I like to take all information before making a decision on a question. And I'm, I don't believe I'm afraid to speak out if I do see an issue or some act of malfeasance in any way. And I know that I will have to build relationships with the board and administrator and administration, but I still have my duty as a trustee to be objective in what I see and how I vote and what needs to be done in terms of policymaking.
Thank you. I also understand that GMH divides the board members up into committees, so you maybe become an expert on one committee, right? Because you go to the working meetings and, and you know every single detail, and on the other committees, maybe not so much. So I think they're, they naturally just, you know, agree with those who were serving on the other committee, but I guess I'm going to ask you to do that as well, right? To become an expert in all fields, like regarding GMH, if you can, to urge you that, to go outside of the committee that you're assigned and really to become expert in every committee there, because, yeah, you'll, you'll see the crisis that we're in, I think, soon. All right, I'm going to give it to the vice-chair, Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, good afternoon to you, Mr. Aguilar. I mean, you've taken on, you're choosing to take on quite a challenge. I sense from your, even before you spoke, there's some emotion involved, and certainly once you elaborated what you've been through with regards to your own health issues and certainly to have your sister here, that, that says a lot of wanting to ensure that we have good, safe healthcare. But I have to tell you, you know, the hospitals, like the Department of Education, never quite gets there. No matter how much money we pour into it, no matter how many, as the speaker said, oversight hearings, we're still never quite getting off the ground. And this current administration has put a lot of emphasis on the building of a new hospital, and yet we're seeing the existing one, and I'm sure we'll hear more this afternoon at the oversight hearing, you know, where we're hearing that, you know, vendors are not being paid. And I'm sure in the private sector, if you don't get your vendors paid, then you don't get the supplies and the support and the services that you need. And it's in such a critical area, and of course, people might not think it's as important unless they're, you know, they're a patient there or they have a loved one there. A lot of us, though, maybe we have the luxury of going off-island and getting medical care, but there might be circumstances where we don't have that luxury, and we actually have to depend on our hospital that's here. And it's like, how do we ever get out of the gear that we're in that's going nowhere? How do we ever get to a point that the quality of services that are being provided, the maintenance of the hospital, the priorities of the hospital? We always hear about the hiring, you know, the immense size of the hospital, and are most of the people being hired, are they direct healthcare to the patients? Because the hospital's always been politicized, and how do you break past that? Because culturally here, you know, we like to be nice to each other on the surface and underneath each other. We, you know, we're not so nice. And when you raise questions, it's uncomfortable. People don't like that. They, oh, I'm glad you raised that question, Senator, but they themselves would never ask it because we just don't, we don't want to. ask it because we just don't, we don't want to rock the boat. We don't want to make anybody upset, particularly people in power that, you know, might not be so happy with what we have to say. And yet, the quality of where we're at, when we hear the story, it doesn't matter what administration, we still hear the same old problems. So, how do you think you're going to make a difference to that, walking in as you do with, with a very direct awareness of the need to have good, basic healthcare for our people? Because I look at the hospital physically, the infrastructure, and this whole idea that, oh, we're just going to build a new one and abandon that. And that's somehow going to ensure we have better healthcare when we can't even afford, obviously, right now. If you owe 22-plus million, we'll find out what the numbers are today. If you can't even pay that now, taking care of current patients now that need the healthcare, how are we going to do better down the road with a building that hasn't been built? So I wanted to ask you, what are your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Senator Brown. Yes, I understand that the infrastructure currently at the Guam Memorial is an old hospital. It's been there since, what, 1976, if I'm not mistaken? And most buildings don't last that long, you know, without building a new one. But the, I understand that the need for a new building would be necessary because it would promote a better facility, better equipment, access. But given the, the condition that we have now, the, the best thing that we can do is, is basically just make the repairs and improvements as much as we can. And I know that in order to do that, funding is most important. And how do we get that funding? I know appropriations done by the legislature can be difficult, you know, to obtain all those funds and getting the, the taxes from, you know, department administration, how do you, how do you collect on those to fund the hospital's necessities for, for workforce challenges, for improvement challenges? It's, it's going to be something that you, I cannot determine that at this time because until I understand the process of how they're collecting revenues, how they're paying vendors off, and how often do we get funding to pay for these expenses? And I know there's probably a challenge as well in many hospitals around the country. So, we're not, you know, unique to that issue. And hopefully, that we can find ideas that could help find those funding sources. And I think funding is probably the biggest obstacle right now.
Well, I, and I would add also that I think the managing of the funds are also critical because the Speaker mentioned, I mean, you know, a year and a half ago, we had a board member that came up for confirmation and we asked this issue because we were a little concerned. How do you prioritize a PIO above step versus other critical positions at the hospital? I could be a PIO, you could be a PIO, anybody here could be a PIO. That's not that tough a job. I could do that job any day of the week. And yet, the hospital prioritize above step hiring for a PIO. I don't care what marketing they do. I mean, it, you know, really, I'm going to market for the hospital. When you see those type of things happen, you don't see the priority. Earlier this year, the hospital had a breach and I wasn't happy with the hospital, I was quite direct about the inaccurate information that was provided to the public to justify why people couldn't call into the hospital. And I understand, you know, they might have been doing their investigation, I mentioned it at the time, I understand that. But I think to a certain degree, you also have to be upfront and honest and let people know what's going on and not affect your investigation. But when misinformation is formally provided to the public, then you kind of step back and really wonder what's going on if information is not being truthful. Then you find out down the road, there's total misinformation being provided to the public. And when we see stuff like that going on, it raises your eyebrow. One of the other nominees, we had asked the question, what, to what degree were they involved in planning for a new hospital? And they're like, oh, we're not involved. And this board member had been sitting on the board for quite, since the previous Calvo administration. And we're like, why not? So who's running the show? So when things like that happen and the politics runs thick, very thick, and when the right decisions need to get made, sometimes they don't. Because, you know, we don't want to offend, we don't want to upset the powers that be. And yet, you know, the governor came in with her plan and her agenda, she was a nurse, she was going to make healthcare better. We're five years down the road, three years, barely three and a half years left, and ask ourselves, are we better? And so I hope, I mean, it's, it's quite a task. I mean, this is not a glamour board, this is not GBB, this is not GIDEA. I mean, this is GMH with all the problems, the warts and everything else that come with it. And I hope you can make a difference. I think you have a very earnest interest in wanting to see that. But I think you also need to realize the challenges that you're up against and why haven't the previous board members been able to break that ceiling?
It's an interesting question, Senator. And it is a very difficult answer to, I mean, question to answer. But given, you know, culturally, that it's going to take a lot of convincing of other board members, not just for me, to come into the, have the same mindset that we really need to work towards one goal. And that's providing quality service for the hospital and also considering its cost to operate it. And I understand that, you know, it is really, really hard. I've seen, I know that the, right now, the payables are over 27 million currently. And it's, how do you prioritize payments? How do you effectively collect on revenues? And just convince the board that, where do you, where do you cut the fat? How do you save on cost, operating costs, without compromising the quality of service? And until, you know, we can find those avenues of doing so, then I think it has to be as a consensus of the whole board, not just for myself, but I'll, you know, hopefully that my inputs will be taken with a grain of salt and that they're willing to make the changes that are recommended to them. And hopefully, I know that it is, again, culturally, it's going to be difficult and it's just getting them to be more objective. And I know it's hard for them because it's, you know, they let emotions get in the way. They are more subjective in their decision-making. And it's, it's going to be a difficult task. But I hope that, like, at least I can make some headway in my participation in that board.
Well, I certainly hope with your financial background that you'll be able to scrutinize because, you know, like I said, I nod my head and just like DOE, my eyes glaze over every time I hear the responses. I, I'm, I'm bothered by it because I think we know how important it is. I mean, we've had family members that have been born there and have died there. And I, myself, have been a patient at GMH. Others inevitably, at some point in your life, probably will be a patient at GMH. And I think we want to ensure that we get the services that we need. But when you have antiquated equipment and the list goes on. You have contracts that you've got to wonder, who got that contract and are they working on it? And are they spending their time investing in it? Which doctor gets what? Who gets what of the pie? And when you don't see the basic maintenance, the basic sanitation, you know, roofs are leaking and, oh, we didn't have the money to fix it, and 10, 20 years later, and the elevator that's on and off every time you turn around, I mean, the list goes on. And at just at some point, you want to see things shift. And the idea is, we just can't rebuild buildings every 30 or 40 years once they're paid off. They expect us to do that for schools, they expect us to do it for Simon Sanchez. I've been to schools on Guam, public schools, they're far older than Simon Sanchez. And I hope that we need to address where we're at now. If we're doing cellular with where we're at now, then I can worry we're going to be five, 10, 15 years. But when we're failing now to address these basic issues at a time when revenue is supposed to be falling from the sky, all your financial people in this administration are bragging, ooh, $100 million surplus! And yet, where are we with GMH? We're the same place that GMH, where we were when the revenues weren't falling from the sky. It's not adding up. The investment is not adding up of where it should be with what the expectations are that our people have. And, you know, love us or not, we represent the public. Each one of us, in our own, unique way, represent the interests of the public. And that's why we get to ask these questions, that's why we're sitting here, to represent their interests, concerns. And at some point, we just want to see that shift. You know, we want to see upright and, and direct answers even when they're not pleasant. You know, I'd rather have an honest person tell me what they think than to BS me because I, you know, we see that all the time and it, and who suffers at the end of the day? I think you and your family, as many of our families on Guam, realize that. So, I do wish you well. This is an undertaking. I mean, the fact that you're willing to step up with your background, I, I hope you will, you know, take your fine, sharp little pencil and look at some of those things because there's abuse happening. Let's not kid ourselves. People get accommodated at the expense of others. And that I hate. I, I mean, if you work for it, you earned it, more power to you. But when they play the game and they benefit all public resources at the expense of the public, I have a problem with that. That bothers me to no end. And it happens every day in this government. And there are people in very high places that turn a blind eye. As a matter of fact, they don't even look because accommodations get made and people stay in power at the expense of our people. And I think that's just wrong. So, I certainly wish you well. You got a tough job, but I, I hope, it seems like your heart's in the right place, that you want to do good things and having been through what you've been through, you know, that you will look out for the rest of our people. So thank you, appreciate you answering my questions.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I was listening to your testimony, it, I just completely froze when you were talking about your history and what happened to you and how that you want to give back, you know, being able to survive what you did and then wanting that, you know, helping others because you, you survived. You remind me of myself. I had went through similar, something very similar and decided, you know, I'm going to run again and see if I can help my island, my community. And I have to tell you, I, I came back swinging. People know that I'm still swinging because I, I believe that if I'm going to really make a difference, like I said, and what has happened to me, that, then I need to be able to really be hard. You know, I've got a lot of people up here can sit there and say sweet nothings to your ear and, but absolutely, do absolutely nothing to help the community and just agree on everything. So, I hope you have that same enthusiasm because once you're in that seat and you remind yourself how lucky you are to be here and how, what you went through, the experience you went through, it's going to give you that energy to be able to ask the hard questions. Just remember that, you know? I, I do that all the time. And I greatly appreciate you, you know, doing that because you can, you could just sit back and not want to do anything really and just live on your life, but what you're doing is giving back, so. And I'm glad to see your boss has allowed you, and I'm not talking about your boss at Triple J, I'm talking about your wife, your family that is here today to give you the support. Because there are going to be times you're going to lean on them. The hospital is not in a good shape right now and we're seeing it deteriorate every day. We're still talking about how we're going to build a new hospital because of the one we have right now. But nobody's talking about what are we going to do now for the hospital currently until we can get a new hospital. So, Mr. Aguilar, have you seen any five-year or 10-year plan for the current hospital?
Thanks, Senator. I was able to read their strategic plan that was just, I believe, was going to be passed this year. And I know part of their plan is, you know, to build a hospital. But right now, the trouble, the, the issues with, for me, I've always been, is funding. You know, I'm a finance guy, so I'm always looking at the money side. And what, what, what do we do? And how can we find that, those resources? And it's really difficult. And until we can work, I guess, with revenue taxes, one, because they are collecting our funds, and also, I know that we can only get so much from the federal government for appropriations, where do we, how do we prioritize cost and spending? And it's a, it's going to be, hopefully, something I can probably bring a fresh perspective and see what we can find.
Well, maybe you should start with asking where that five-year or 10-year plan for the current hospital we have today, it sounds like you're seeing something that's for a new hospital. But it's today, it's just like you and I, we, we're sick today. What we have to pause our, our health until a new hospital's built so that we feel safe going in to be cared for, we have to look at today and tomorrow. What are we going to do to protect our patients today? What are we going to do to keep our staff from being, you know, safe, going to work and not worrying about the ceiling falling down or slipping on the floor because a puddle's there that was leaking? Or, you know, air conditioning for ICU unit? These are the things I'm hoping that you'll tackle today and, and follow through with it. So, Ms. Aguilar, the first question you might want to ask this board is, where is the five-year or 10-year plan for today's hospital? Not a brand-new one, but what it is for today. Have you had an opportunity to look at any of the board minutes in the last year?
I was able to read the last two that were completed just here in January and March. And a lot of the discussions that were made were mostly with the new electronic health, electronic health records. And that's something they just implemented just last year. And that's something hopefully will streamline the patients that come in, provide their rec, you know, update their records for any charges that they have, any, any, any...
Yeah, I, I'm not really asking for in detail. It's just you're the first one of, I've asked if you've, you know, they've seen the board minutes, you know, as they sit in front of us for confirmation, but they don't even bother to look at the, the last two or three board meetings and you're the first one. So I want to congratulate you for doing that.
I like the prepared, Senator.
You know, you definitely got an A+ for me on that, just being able to do your research before sitting down in front of us. I'm, I'm very happy to see that. That tells me about you, that you are going to continue to follow through with things like that. Don't think it's just going to come to you, but hard work is going to make you even smarter and then definitely studying the situation that we're in. So I'm, I'm happy you did that. Accreditation isn't, is very important. So you might want to put your finger on that one, you know, to ensure that our hospital is accredited because that has to do with a lot of financing too, to be able to get those grants. And if we lose that, there goes a lot of funding that we could, we could use right now. Risk management team? Ask that you look into that, Mr. Aguilar, the risk management team at the hospital. So, that being said, you know, I'm not going to delay it, but like I said, you already got an A+ for looking back at those board meetings. And I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate and if, you know, my door is always open if you have any questions at all, you know? I just hope you come out swinging like I have. Don't be afraid. My door is open if you need some backers, okay? Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. Senator Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Do you have, you're CPA, which is just a wonderful thing. And more power to you, it's a great addition to the board. Do you have any ideas on collections at the hospital?
Well, Senator, collections is one of the difficult challenges that any business right now, like we have as well. And the only way we can either do it is to just stay on them, get on, just keep contacting them religiously. And I know even applying like interest or penalties on those invoices may not always work. And so, other avenues you can have is just going to collection agencies. But at the end of the day, how soon can you get those funds? So until, you know, we can convince these payers to make, do with their, with the payments, then it's, it's going to be a challenge. And I hope that we can find, you know, more, I think it's just getting on them religiously and just seeing what we can do. I know even payment plans, installment plans might be an option, but collecting those on time may also be a challenge as well.
And also collecting from the insurance companies. Do you have any thoughts on whether or not collections and medical billing at the hospital, I don't even know if that's practical, but at least on the collections side, would you be comfortable outsourcing that as opposed to just handling it in-house?
I believe that would be a good viable option. It's, as long as the outsource is effective in collections. Because if we, on our side, especially with a lot of the collections are from people on Guam and businesses on Guam and insurance companies on Guam, what difference, how, how would the outsourced agency be effective if we're not as effective? So it's going to have the same challenges as well.
Well, because you're a CPA, what sort of, what sort of analysis would you bring to the issue on whether or not it made economic sense to outsource it as opposed on whether or not it made economic sense to outsource it as opposed to in-house?
It's a good question. It looks like one of the, probably, I'm not sure it's a solution, but if we can get the outsourced, not the outsourced, but the, yeah, the outsourced person or the outsourced company to... Now, that's gonna be a difficult question. Because even, like I said, it is, it's still gonna be an issue just trying to get these folks to pay their bills. And I, I'm not sure how we can, you know, you know, without the cause, you know, purpose of going back. And, you know, I don't think we should go as far as, you know, taking a baseball bat to them and say, pay your bills. I mean, it's, it's gonna be hard, so. It's a, it's a tough question.
Is it, does, I know that medical billing is almost an art form. It's, I think, I think the director would agree with that. It's, medical billing, it's, it's complicated. And it's, it's, to get a clean claim, I think, is what it's called. It requires a certain level of expertise. Is that, is that something that would interest you? And I mean, as a board member, maybe, you know, be in the sphere on that one?
Yes, I believe it'd be one of the things I would have to look into. I know that especially collecting from insurance companies, a lot of the payments that they make are denied. And whether or not the coverage that they have may not be able to cover the patient's bills. And so what does, what does that leave? It leaves a patient now in the hole of paying it themselves. So maybe we can find ways from getting Medicaid or Medicare or, you know, to assist with that coverage if we can. But hopefully, we can find a way to cover those bills because right now, I don't think that the way we're billing the patients, the recovery of those costs is probably, you know, less than 70%.
I think, I think, I think you're probably correct there, sir. You know, I believe that everybody at the hospital is doing everything they can. Nobody, nobody wants an inferior institution. I think the hospital is working as diligently as they can with certain, you know, certain problems. You know, the facility, that's hardly a misery and their perennial underfunding. And that's just the truth of the matter. I like the fact that a CPA is going to be on the board. I like that very much. And I just, you know, every time anybody screams about the hospital, essentially, they're gonna be screaming at you. And I hope you're, I hope you're ready for that. I suspect you are. And thank you for your service, sir. And I appreciate your answers.
Oh, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Caneta.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to my colleagues and good afternoon to the panel. Thank you guys for coming out here, most especially to Mr. Aguilar. Thank you for taking up a public service helm. You know, it shows in your, your employment jacket, you've, you've risen through the ranks through the years very prestigiously from the auditor giant Deloitte Intouch. So I think that speaks volumes that you like taxes and you like numbers. And that's why you have a CPA, right?
Yes, Senator.
So I love your sister, Mar. She's been a great chief public health officer, I think, at DPHSS. So you definitely have my support just on that. And I'm sure on a personal note, you, you both as siblings, you know, you know the, the issues that are at GMH and that you are gonna take every literal part of your body to figure out solutions versus complaints, right? We, we gotta find solutions because it's easy to point out problems, but let's find solutions, right? And I know you have a very tough wife right behind you who is very strong. And I know you're a very strong man because, you know, behind every strong man, there's even stronger woman. That's why I'm single. So, you know, with that being said, it's been an ongoing issue of GMH, right? And I'm hopeful that your new resolve, you'll bring new resolve and new solutions to us and so that we can address the situations at GMH. And as, also as a fellow shark, I want to wish you all the best. And, you know, my office stands ready to support you in any way, but you definitely have my support. Wish you all the best.
Thank you, Senator.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Senator Caneta. All right. I also wanted to, before we close, just suggest transparency. I feel like the more oversight the board does, the less the legislature has to because the public will know. They'll know on a, on a, on, how do they call that, real-time basis, what's going on at the hospital. And I know, I remember during COVID, Lillian used to go on the radio every day. I really appreciated that. We don't hear it as much anymore. Everyone's very busy. I understand that. But I just think, like I said, when they see something and we can't get answers right away or we get kind of funky answers and then it just evolves into many, many more questions. I don't know. That's the kind of thing. I think transparency is never gonna go wrong. So even if it's horrible news, let's hear it, I say. Let the public know. We have a crisis. Let them know. And what the problem is and what our solutions are so far. And even if we don't know the answer yet, just say, we don't know. We're gonna try to find out as fast as possible. This is who's going to help us try to find out, whatever. But I don't know. I just feel like sometimes it's a transparency. So recently, they had a complete shutdown of their information systems, their electronic system shutdown. That created so much, so many questions, I think. And the way it was handled, the public was not informed right away. We were informed by insiders in the hospital and so that kind of thing. I just feel like maybe the hospital, they come out right away and inform everybody, particularly those working there as fast as possible. We had also in, for various years, several years now, I want to make sure that the trustees are closely monitoring the budget of GPA, the budget requests of GP, I'm sorry, GMH. Because they were not aware that GMH has not made requests for capital improvement funds in the last three or four budgets. They come in with requests, for example, the governor and her last budget request, status quo for FY23. So that's operation. So GMH is expected to do the capital improvement projects with their operating budget. I don't know. If you read the capital improvement list or, you know, the, the things that need to be done, it's huge, right? So that doesn't, that's something that, yeah, I just want to say, don't think it's not your realm. I think it's absolutely your realm because those are the issues that we are seeing. We can't answer to the public why these capital improvement projects are not completed. And if people say, oh, it's because we don't have the funds. Well, the governor said status quo on your funds. We gave you even more than that. You are not asking for the CIP projects and there's, I want to understand that, why, right? And I don't understand that. So we, we've tried to give more money that they're not even asking for. And it won't be, I don't know. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Anyway, so there are many issues. These are past issues. Physicians pay for more than one position, right? That, so like we say, anything that exceeds or looks excessive, then we feel like that's taking away from fixing something else. And so we had these as topics of the issue, of the oversight hearings at certain point. The CMS, of course, when CMS comes, they're, they're looking at quality of care concerns. And I hope that you become fully knowledgeable about those and what GMH did to resolve that and if you think that that's adequate yourself, right? We don't know because a lot of times they're confidential and they will not let us in on it until we see it in the news or we see it in some other way. There was even visitation issues in the past, right? Who was allowed to visit? Some of it was COVID-related, some things like that. It's like the public needs answers to that right away. All right. Mr. Aguilar, did you want to, before we conclude, do you have anything else to add?
It's interesting that you mentioned that, Senator, that, that the board or GMH has not approached you regarding additional appropriations, I mean, especially for, you said, capital improvements. And if that's available, I don't see why we can't ask for that. It's, it's, it's a necessary, you know, fund that we can use. And if it helps with the CIP, then achieve our CIP goals, then it's something we should look into. And regarding transparency, my experience has always been, it's always to come forward, especially when dealing with my clients when I was at Deloitte. It's giving them the bad news. It is a hard thing to do, but you just have to, you know, pick yourself up and then be taxable, be, you know, be honest with them. And it usually, nine times out of 10, they understand the, the point of what's going on with their, their taxes. So it's something that I'm not afraid to do. And hopefully that, you know, that the board as a whole, you know, will be able to advise the legislative, the legislature about these issues that they find instead of you finding out in the news. It's, that's the whole point of this board is to have oversight over GMH. So it's, it's sharing the information.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. And thank you again for being willing to accept this appointment and to serve as a member of the Guam Board, the Board of Trustees for the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. If there are no further questions or comments and no additional individuals to testify, the committee will consider the appointment of Edgar T. Aguilar to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees from March 22, 2019 to March 21, 2025 to fill an unexpired term of Byron Everisto Dooley-Hard. And Sisus Massey to all of you for coming today to testify. Sisus Massey.
Thank you.
We're hereby...